Appearance on Dion's Daily Dose does not imply endorsement from or by any candidate or guest. The views, thoughts, and opinions expressed by Dion Bergeron or Dion's Daily Dose are his own and do not represent the views, thoughts, and opinions of any guest. Material and information presented is for general information purposes only. The Dion's Daily Dose name and all forms and abbreviations are the property of its owners and its use does not imply endorsement of or opposition to any specific organization, product, or service. If you'd like to support the show, please visit our Patreon at patreon.com/diansdailydose.
We are live. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to Dion's Daily Dose for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. So as you can see,
Hello.
Donovan is here with us today and apparently so is PBK, my big black cat. Well, mine and Donovan's really. He's almost invariably much nicer to Donovan than he is to me.
He is far nicer.
He listens to Donovan. He will come when Donovan calls. He very rarely will come when I call.
Hello Jack.
Good to see you.
Hi.
So we're real quick, catch you up before we get started with Donovan. I went door knocking in the pines today and I met some wonderful people. Couple of them were very adamant that our current state rep does not care about that area and they have reached out to the current representative a number of times and have been ignored. So I assured them that that's one of the things that I was trying to fix. I also attempted to go to the Michigan City City Council meeting that was held today at 6:30 and couldn't. Jack asked, does my district include North Judson? It does not. It is, North Judson is a little further the, further to the east. I am not sure exactly whose district that is. I could find out if, if you would like, but I tried the, if you go to emichigancity.com and if you look at the calendar of events today, there was supposed to be a city council meeting at 6:30. Yeah, he said it was just there. Yep. Oh, no grocery store. Oh, that's unfortunate. I didn't realize North Judson was Sam's store. Anyway, I went, tried to go to the council meeting and it says on the website, as a matter of fact, we'll, we'll bring it up. It says in person. And I tried to go to the, to the council meeting and pulled up at the city hall, went to the doors and it was closed. It said, "City Hall is closed to the public until further notice." It also said a mask is required. So, okay. I had a mask with me. I was prepared, but nothing. So I don't know how you're supposed to attend the city council meetings if it's closed. So I'm going to show you real quick. Let me go back to that, make it full screen for a moment. Just show you here, news and events, right? Today, the 18th, city council regular meeting. You click on the regular meeting and it says, first and third Tuesday of each month, 6:30 PM in City Hall. So I went there and it's closed. It's locked up, locked up. So you can't attend and there's no, I don't know if it's online. I looked. There doesn't appear to be a way to see even what's going on as a resident of Michigan City. That bothers me, but enough of all that, we're going to, we're going to talk to Donovan for a bit.
Hi.
Hi. We're going to see what's going on with him and back, back to you Donovan. And with our guy on the ground. School starts up next week, less than a week.
If you were paying more attention, you would realize I'm not on the ground.
Well, technically, you're not on the ground, right? Dun dun dun. So are you excited about going back to school?
Nope.
And why not?
Because school sucks.
Always or just this year?
About 90% of the time, but especially this year.
Especially this year.
But usually it sucks in general, but especially this year.
Okay. And what makes it different this year?
Well, for one, I was kind of, you know, pumped to get the real high school experience, you know, you know, going, going from class to class. It's a new school. There's, it's a school, you know?
Right.
But instead now I'm just going to be home.
So is it, is it frustrating to you? That your, your first, you know, because you're going as a freshman at Michigan City High School, right? You were looking forward to that, like you said, that high school experience. Even as a freshman, you're starting a new school, meeting new people, going to different classes. Signed up for some classes that you were pretty excited about. And of course you find out, oh, it's only going to be virtually, right? It's all going to be online at the beginning. Did that part bother you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it, was it frustrating to, to find out that it's just going to be online and you're not going to be able to go hang out with your friends and stuff like that?
Yeah.
So I talked about it a little bit, but I didn't give it, didn't really have you on to talk about your, your view. Cause Donovan has a gas mask and it's, it's not just, it's not for pretend. It's a true legitimate.
It is, and I, is that Israeli or not? No, it's Israeli. It's actual Israeli gas mask, rubber filter, all that is a proper gas mask.
Yes.
NBC NATO.
Correct. See? And what's the NBC stand for?
Nuclear Biological Chemical.
Very good. We got him some filters. He was all set up.
I was ready to, ready to rock into that school with a full gas mask. I got it months prior too.
Yeah, yeah. Way before the pandemic.
I just liked it. I just wanted that gas mask. I was like, that's worth 20 bucks.
Yeah. So we, we got it for him and, or did you buy it yourself?
I bought it.
Yeah. He, he was like, I want that. I'm going to buy it. So he got it. And we picked him up some filters for it and we started talking about, you know, if you go back to school, you're going to have to have a face mask. And he's like, mask? Did somebody say mask?
I kinda basically did react like that.
So he was like,
Somebody say mask?
Well, they want a mask. I'm going to give him a real mask, right?
No cloth. Nah. I'm going to give him a real mask.
So that,
I'm showing what mask means.
Yeah. So he was actually excited about it. He was like,
I was going to make a statement. At least that's what, that's how they're phrasing it. I was just going to wear the gas mask.
Yeah. And that was part of it too. He was like, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mean this, right? They, they want protection. I've got protection. Dun dun dun.
Yeah.
So then it gets passed down that he's not going to be able to attend in person, at least for the first semester. Very, very disappointed.
Right. We got filters and everything.
And there was something else that we found out recently and that is that Michigan City schools are going to be implementing the social and,
God, yeah.
Social, oh yeah, social and emotional learning into the curriculum. Because obviously that's more important than reading, writing, or arithmetic.
Yeah, you know, taxes or, you know, how to, how to take a loan from the bank or, you know, then other myriad of skills you can learn.
Right. How to, you know, make sure that you don't end up with a disastrous credit score before you're even out on your own or anything like that, right?
Nope. They're, no show how to teach you how to be friends with everyone.
Right. And it goes a little deeper than that. I understand. But one of the things that my wife brought up and was talking on a group to some people about were, so my understanding is that one of the ways that the schools deal with the kids who don't, whose parents opt them out of these types of activities and learning sessions is they will pull them out of class and put them in almost a detention-like setting. We talked to Donovan. We're like, is that going to bother you, right? To go into those types of settings to be on your own, by yourself maybe? And I'll let you, I'll let you tell them how you feel about that. Or do you want me to go ahead? Okay. All right. So he said, wait a minute, you mean they're going to let me read and not yell at me?
Yeah. They're just going to let me leave and read for half an hour.
He's a bookworm. He loves to read. What are you, what are you working on now? Are you reading something right now?
Probably.
Did you finish 50,000 Leagues Under the Sea?
That whole book? Oh wait, no, that's the Jules Verne.
So we got, we have the Jules Verne novel collection. Paul, good to see you. He's been working on it a little bit. Oh, and just so I can give a quick shout out, his, his shirt that he is wearing, that is from Hangover Gang.
This is an illegible thing.
Right. They, they can see it. Yeah.
Eh, I can try.
Yeah. No, you can see it very well. It's, we went to, that was Donovan's very first concert that he went to was a Tom McDonald concert.
I like him.
And,
He's cool.
Yeah. We picked him up that shirt, actually his brother.
It's mine now.
But he, he found it and has been wearing it until I can send it
Yep. It is, it is mine now.
To his younger brother. Anyway, so Donovan is perfectly fine with sitting out and not being involved in, in something like that. It's not going to bother him in the least.
The less people, the better.
It's going to be an interesting school year, right? Would you agree with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Probably one of the worst, but still an interesting one nonetheless.
Yeah. So we've got this area here. I'm going to get it straightened up, but this is probably going to be where Donovan's going to do his, his e-learning. Well, somewhat. You can't really see it.
Pick it up.
Yeah. We've got the little, little desk area there. Here. Got my little change cup. Got the headphones and the microphone here for him, but okay. Yeah. See all this stuff's in there right now. There. See if I could fix this back the way it was. Anyway, yeah, unfortunately, but we're going to clean these books off. Speaking of books, I have some really good books that I want you to read here. Yeah. That's, my arm wasn't in the right.
It was.
Was.
It's because you were laying it on the desk and it went,
Yeah. So, Yeah, I could see that. Jack says, I vote for fewer people. I found not wearing a mask keeps them 10 feet away. Yay. That's, that's one way to do it. And Paul, you're absolutely right. There's, there are a lot of crazies out there. Just everywhere. But we have,
Everyone's a crazy now.
It certainly seems, seems so in many situations, but I gotta tighten those things up. It's very loose, but I hope everybody's okay or able to hear Donovan all right. We've got, got the secondary microphone setup for him.
In fact, could someone write chat, chat, you know, microphone, chat, chat, one, two, you know? Eh, I'm improvising.
Hey, whatever works.
Improv.
Yay.
Green mouse.
So, uh-oh, Paul says he got Karen'd in Meyer on Sunday. Oh no, what happened?
I want, I want to hear.
Did, was it one of those epic rants where it's like, you're putting my health at risk? You're going to kill us all?
Oh, I hope so.
And just out of curiosity, was it someone on one of the little carts with like a massive McDonald's, you know, cup full of liquid poison and, you know, heavy smoker possibly? Those, those are the ones that crack me up personally.
See, you sir, Tom McDonald's drinks liquid poison.
No, I'm saying, let's face it though, a lot of the stuff that you, we, here's the thing. If you drink a Coke, that's fine, but if that's what you guzzle 24/7, that's, that's an issue.
Fair point.
And I had, I had to cut my pop, soda, Coke, whatever, whatever your personal preference is for calling it. Speaking of,
Soda pop.
Liz, my wife, calls it pop. She insists that that is the only thing it can be called.
Soda, pop, cola.
Now Donovan, on the other hand, he considers that a personal challenge. And so he calls it soda. Yeah. Anything other than pop.
I'll call it pop when she's not around. I will call it anything when she's not around. I'll call it pop, soda, fizzlies. I don't care. I just pick a name for it and go with it. For about 30 seconds, then I pick another one. But when she's around, I pick anything but pop. I'll call it soda, that fizzy one, anything.
He has this, he has this habit of, you know, pushing people's buttons.
We need a second mouse so I can dictate where the mouse is clicked.
Yeah. See, Paul says pop only. He is of the pop crew. He insists that he call pop.
If we ever meet in person, you start calling it pop, I'm going to call it anything but that. Just, just to annoy you. Only for that reason. Just to push your buttons.
Yeah.
I like you, I think, but.
Paul's awesome. He's, he's good people.
Soda is clear and flavorless.
Ah, see, yeah.
Looks like your attitude. No, I'm kidding. I don't know. I'm looking for anything. I don't know.
Yeah. So you know what? I will say this. Donovan left me hanging today. Yeah. He didn't go with me knocking doors.
Oh, come on.
He made me go by myself.
Don't be like that. You, you know, you can't be like that after the things you said when you were leaving.
It was sad.
Boy, get, get out of here.
All by myself and.
Get yo, get out of here. You know what you said.
No, it was, it was, it was fine. I, I told him, I'm like, obviously you don't have to. And he's like, I will tell you this. He was like, I want to help. I, I just, I don't want to go today.
I really didn't.
And that's okay. I said, that's, that's fine. He's like, what can I do to help? Cause I really do want to help.
What are you doing? I'm looking at the marker.
Okay. Don't, don't, I'm sorry. I can find something. Yeah. Jack says he can teach you how to subtly push people's buttons.
Oh, I already, I'm already.
He, he really is a master at it. But I'm sure he'd be willing to listen to any,
Advice.
Advice in that area. What did I just, did you write on me? You did. Why would you do that? Why would you do that?
Cause it's hilarious.
Oh, and he says Robin calls it soda too, till I fix that.
I don't like the way you phrase that. It sounds like I strapped him to a table and said, it's pop.
It's pop. You must say it's pop. You will.
You know, no, it's soda.
Right.
It's pop.
Of course you would jump immediately to that.
Like torture.
Yeah. Yeah. So, today really is just kind of a hangout session, take a little break from the, the constant campaign information overload. Donovan would like to beca-
I didn't do it. I used the back.
Okay. That's not cool, man. That's my campaign shirt.
I know. That's why I used the back.
Okay. All right. Cause see, he's, oh yeah. And that's, that's another point. Either or better than calling everything Coke. Yes. Louisiana is the exact same way. Everything carbonated down there is a Coke.
Pepsi.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Everything's Coke. It doesn't matter. Brand name, anything. I would like to point out though, just while I'm thinking about it, those of you that are Pepsi fans, I don't know if you saw this, but Pepsi actually is retweeting Media Matters garbage.
Oh no.
So here, let me see if I can find it.
Pepsi Media Matters retweet.
Yeah. Let's see here. Yeah. Unintentional activity is what they, what they say. Okay. So here we go. Let me show you.
Do the thingy. Yeah, do the thingy.
There we go. Put that to full screen. Yeah. There we go. I did the big thingy. All right. So, why is Pepsi retweeting Media Matters videos to their 3 million followers? PepsiCo cites unintentional activity for Twitter slam of Tucker Carlson. PepsiCo is blaming an allegedly unauthorized use of the Twitter channel for its Pepsi brand for criticism of Fox News talk show Tucker Carlson. Yeah. They say, oops, oops. You're going to do the what? You're going to do the comment? Okay. Donovan's going to do the commentary. I'm going to read the article. On Friday evening, the Pepsi Twitter channel retweeted a post by Nikki McCann Ramirez, a researcher at Media Matters for America, that called Carlson to task for repeatedly mispronouncing the first name of US Senator Kamala Harris.
Come on, how hard is that name?
Quote, Tucker Carlson loses it when a guest corrects his pronunciation of Kamala Harris's name, said Ramirez's tweet, which included a video of Carlson referring to the presumptive Democratic Party vice presidential nominee as Carmella. The Pepsi Twitter channel,
Cream caramel chocolate bar.
I'd agree. Which has approximately 3 million followers retweeted the post without comment, but that retweet was deleted on Saturday afternoon.
Sounds like somebody realized they made a mistake.
Bing, bing, bing. PepsiCo issued a statement to the news site Mediaite that explained the retweet was not officially sanctioned by the purchase headquartered company.
One, media is not it anymore. And two, eh, I kind of feel like that's a mix of truth and lie. They're not going to lie.
Yeah. Quote, recently there was unusual and unintentional activity from the Pepsi brand Twitter account. It has since been removed.
What it covered your arms.
Right? We are investigating this occurrence and have implemented additional backend security measures.
If they don't stop lying on the backend, their entire company.
Carlson did not publicly comment on the PepsiCo retweet.
Of course he didn't.
Look, it's, come on, come on, just, just take responsibility, right?
Dr. Pepper is neither. It's Joe Jorgensen.
It's the Joe Jorgensen of beverages. Yep. Neither Pepsi nor Coke, neither Republican nor Democrat. It is the Dr. Pepper. Yeah. I, I, I hear you. So I don't know, I, I haven't heard from them yet, Paul. Paul is responsible for hooking up the lieutenant governor for the Libertarian Party to be on our show. It's supposed to be next Thursday after the debate. And I'm looking forward to it, but I haven't officially heard from them yet. I hope it's still a go. I think it would be, it'd give me a good time and I'm really looking forward to it. Right? What did you do? What, what is he doing back here?
Nothing.
Help me out.
Come on. Don't be a snitch. Come on.
Snitches get stitches.
Yeah, we're bro. Come on. We're bros.
Yeah. What is he doing? Tell me.
Nothing.
Is he writing on me?
No.
Are you, are you writing on me?
Don't, don't write me up to the politician.
Anyway. Look, regardless of how you feel about, I, I will say this. These big companies are getting involved in politics when they shouldn't.
And they're really stupid to do so.
I, I think so.
Just keep making sugary, like liquid diabetes and we'll all be happy.
Right? I mean, why do these companies feel the need to get involved politically in the first place?
They want to be rad.
Yeah. Paul says he wasn't paying attention anyway, so he's not going to write you off.
I need to be on like the other side of the room so you can hear what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That'd be funny.
Yeah. Are you making the table rattle? Yes. Don't do that. Please. It shakes the camera and it makes, it makes me kind of nervous to be honest. This is all, this is all new, this whole area thing, the new desk. We kind of had it set up the other way, but I don't know. Yeah. Would you stop? Ease back to it. I don't know. I think I'm going to have to take the cup of stuff.
No, this is fine.
Yeah. This is not, this is not working out. I don't know if this is going to be. So Paul says type two, when she's talking about diabetes, isn't caused by sugar itself, actually.
Things.
What do you think it's caused by?
Diabetes.
Diabetes.
Diabetes causes the type one and type two version.
Right, but.
Diabetes mark two.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Diabetes isn't funny.
No, no, it isn't, but there's no reason that we can't enjoy ourselves while having a conversation, right? But, So what is it, what is it caused by? You don't know?
It's caused by gluten. Gluten's killing us all.
It has nothing to do with gluten.
I know.
Yeah. No, it's because your pancreas doesn't produce enough insulin.
Oh yeah.
To counteract.
It's caused by your body being an absolute moron.
In some ways, yeah. There are faulty, faulty parts of the body. Are you, are you, are you rabbit-eering me?
No, I was getting kiddy.
Uh huh. Uh huh. I, I, I'm not sure if I believe you. Anyway, we won't make this drag out too much longer, but I did want to, to have Donovan on and give you a chance to meet him again.
You gave me the idea.
For what? Rabbit, did you rabbit-eer him again?
I did it once. The people on camera can, the people off camera, the cabin can testify. I only did it once.
Just once.
Yeah, just once.
All right. Fair enough. Anyway, this is, oh, Paul says excessive red meat is a big cause for diabetes? I have not heard that. I will look into it. That's interesting. Real quick, I will tell you that the issues today that I ran across in the pines, aside from them, almost everyone that I spoke to agreeing that the current state rep doesn't represent the pines and doesn't seem to care. One of the big issues, apparently two thirds of the pines was put on city water, but a third was not. So there was some concern there. Was built because it was cheaper than rehabbing the current one and what's up? Can I say something?
Can we get serious for a moment? Not least serious, but can we get more, about the same amount of serious for a moment?
Yes, we are very serious.
All right. The microphone back.
Okay.
All right. Now I want to talk to you about something.
Okay.
And all the people viewing, but like two viewers we have. Thank you for joining us.
Appreciate it. A lot of people watch after, just saying.
I know. Still. So to get serious for a moment. I know I've been joking a lot with the markers and all that and the rabbit-eering.
Right, right. It's okay.
I gotta say, it's in good taste. It's hilarious.
I would agree.
But I want to get serious for a moment. That I've said for like five times now. And I want to discuss something that we've discussed on this episode, but not quite as in-depth as I believe we, we could have.
Okay, okay.
School.
All right. What would you like to say?
What is going on?
What do you mean?
Like, this is ridiculous. This whole thing with the schools.
All right. So what, what do you think this is?
For example, that one that was opening up for 35 bucks a student. Remember that?
No, it was a hundred and, it was like a hundred and 50 bucks a student.
Wow. Thanks for making it so much better.
So I, I don't have the actual data for it, but I can get it. Apparently there was a school that is only, it's, it's opening, right? The parents who have to work, they can send their kids to school, but it costs them $150 like a week.
It's ridiculous.
No, this is a public school. I, I don't understand the logistics there. I don't understand how they can even get away with this. But yes, I would agree. It is nuts. I do think that a lot of people are going to be in a very difficult position because they're going to have their kids who need to go to school. They have to go to work.
But they don't have 150 bucks a week to drop on an overpriced babysitter.
Right.
Like baby.
Right.
Baby. What baby?
I don't know. What is a baby?
Oh no, I didn't mean that. I missed you.
It's all right.
Navy officer. In full uniform and all that.
Yeah.
What is a baby? Like commanding a ship.
Baby?
A baby officer in full, in full gear and everything.
Yeah.
But it's a baby.
Like boss baby, but Navy baby? Like baby, Navy baby?
Yeah, baby.
Baby?
Yeah. It's the baby, you know? It's like an entire force of militarized babies.
Yeah.
Then we just throw them in the ocean and they swim and go bite the other people swimming. You know, just go baby force.
So I have a, I have a question for you Donovan. I was looking and I noticed that Notre Dame is actually currently accepting students and they're offering scholarships and stuff like that. Would you like to continue? Do you want to keep going to Michigan City High School?
I have no idea where Notre Dame is.
Uh, it's, it's, it's close. It's not like super far. It's the, not the university, but do you want to go to public school or do you want to go to private school? Do you care either way?
I have slightly conflicting. I, I almost said I don't care.
But you do care. Okay. All right. How?
Cause one, the way that publics, that private schools are portrayed is a lot of, how can I put this without annoying someone?
You're, you can be you.
Yeah, I know I can. Let's say well-off people that.
Okay. So predominantly wealthy.
Predominantly wealthy and predominantly absolutely snotty as hell.
Okay. Okay. I, I can understand your concern.
I'm not entirely sure if that's how it is, but that's the way it's portrayed in every single, single piece of media I have ever looked at.
Yeah. It's not always, it's not always that way. Yeah, it's not always, it's not always that way. I will tell you that I attended private school in Mobile, Alabama, and I went to
Oh, my, damn!
I went to a very, very expensive and my grandfather
Prestigious.
Yeah, prestigious one. Bougie.
Bougie!
There he is.
Yeah, give me that bougie.
Right.
Hey, what do you
And
That's a joke off camera. Joke off camera.
Okay, okay. And I was not rich, not even close, my grandmother's car was falling apart. So I did receive some, I, I don't wanna call it bullying, because I was, I was a good-sized kid, they didn't really bully me, they said some stuff, but not that big a deal. Are you concerned about something like that? I mean, we don't really
I'm afraid that they're all gonna be absolute dickheads.
Okay.
Who just
Language, language, you know better. Okay, not okay.
Like, you know, just go absolutely insane.
Just be jerks, is what you're, what you're concerned about, okay. Cause you don't really get along with people like that, right? That think they're better than everybody else?
No, cause I have an undying passion to show them that they're absolute ignorant fools.
That they're completely wrong about being better than everyone else.
Yeah, and then they get really mad.
I can see that. So
I have too much determination for my own good, like I'm just, I'm literally too determined for my own good.
Yeah, I could see that. Alright, well, that's something that we'll have to talk about, cause I did notice that Notre Dame was accepting scholarships right now.
From public ed.
Yeah, and that's, what are you saying, is there are kids like that in every school?
Yeah.
You know?
It just seems that private schools seem to consist mostly of people.
I would disagree with that, because I, I actually went to St. Paul for a little while.
Okay.
And I didn't have any issues with, with that, probably, let's see, about fourth grade, St. Paul, and then whether you're going to private school or public school, they're the same as far as the, the kids that make them up. Still are that way. And, and unfortunately, that's what you're gonna run across, that there are gonna be some, some kids that are jerks no matter what, and there are gonna be some teachers that way. And the one thing that I, I saw with, with private school, with my experience was it seems like, at least it's been a while, but it seemed like there were better programs for those that were willing to go above and beyond like to put forth real effort, especially in the gifted and talented programs. But my understanding is Michigan City High School has a lot of programs for GT.
Great if, you know.
If they were active, right, right, and that's, that's the other thing, these programs are really suffering. Not sure what's, what's gonna happen here, but, yeah, kinda wrapping it up, if anybody has anything they wanna, they wanna toss out there for Donovan, go ahead.
Alright, I'll just toss out there
Okay.
That, why did we not go to type C a whole lot earlier? Like, come on, those were so annoying.
Okay.
What you said, anything?
Yeah, fair enough.
Like, that's just so
I will say type C, I, I do, I do enjoy type C USB. Because you can do either way, right?
Just plug it in.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of type C, so.
It's the name of the game, I like that game.
What, type C?
No, plug and play.
Plug and play, okay.
You just, you just take your cord, plug it in.
Alright, we're just dragging now, alright, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Time.
Yeah, I appreciate it, see you tomorrow. Hopefully I can get an update on the council information, if there's, if they're going to, if they're gonna make it private, then I believe that they at least, at least need to televise it or, or something. If you're not able to attend your government meetings, then how do you, how do you get change? I, I don't know, so thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us. Okay, I will, I will let Donovan I do my thing and then you do your thing?
Thing, yeah, you made this so much.
I know, I know, I do that, that's why, that's what I do.
Yeah.
Fair, okay. So anyway, oh, so, oh, Jim has a question, he wants to know, just curious, are you politically active?
Don't know what that means, what does that mean?
Like, do you attend political meetings, do you watch
I attend, I, I attend my father's, obviously, but other than that, no, I just kinda stay out of that whole scene, just kinda, I don't really do that. I go to my dad's, you know, like gatherings and all that. But I don't, you know, watch videos on the different statements of this and that, or, you know, office this, or Democrat this, I just kinda stay away from that, you know?
So, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Just kinda, just the last one before we wrap this up.
Alright.
Do you feel, especially obviously now that you're online, it's a little different, but when you attended school physically, did you feel like you were able to express your views, or that it was better to just keep it to yourself?
You see there Jimmy, that's where we have a conundrum. Because a question like that cannot be answered in one answer, by two. Because you asked two questions disguised as one. Now, my views were probably better off silenced, because, well, it seems there's a lot of hypocrites in public schools. Now, for the second part of that question there, oh Jimmy, what was it again? Asked the question Jimmy, asked the question.
Did you feel like you were able to express your views, or do you feel as if it was better to maintain? Like, do you feel that you would've been attacked for being pro-Trump or pro-
I definitely do, considering ninety percent of the people, when they did talk about Trump, it wasn't a negative manner, Mr. Jimmy. And
Who's Jimmy?
It's you, you blubbering fool, now. Now, my views were definitely silent, because, well, we'd be bad the voice.
That seems to be
Where am I going with this?
I, I don't know, you just went off on this whole big
Back to you Jimmy.
Okay.
Hey, I got, I got one fan.
There you go.
Yeah, Jim.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time, Jim, I'll give you a call after I
I like you Jim.
So
You're cool.
Uh, Paul, yeah, let me know what you come up with, with, well, hopefully we can get that thing set up. I just wanna make sure we get everything ironed out if we do have any issues, so. God bless you, God bless India.
If you'd like to support the show, please visit our Patreon at patreon.com/diandsdailydose. This has been Dion's Daily Dose, hosted by Dion Bergeron, executive producers Sean Holgrum and Michael Bibby. Copyright 2020, Dion's Daily Dose, all rights reserved.